I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please? Paul from the second, Sheldon, Paula David. Discussion. Uh, I've been appointed as the budgetary. Gary Barnum, Michael Pollan, our support attendant, are going to present 2023, 2024. Paul, let's talk.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. It's a pleasure to be here and present this budget to you. You will recall that we started this process for the 2223 school year, planning out the 2324 budget back in November. We were using a lot of factors when it came to creating a fiscally sound and appropriate budget for our, our taxpayers and for our school district. And, you know, we talked about a lot of factors during that time, everything from the economy, inflation, the cost of goods, supply chain interruptions, things of that nature. But tonight, as you've seen throughout the course of the spring, what we're presenting to you is a budget that's both educationally and fiscally sound, and the budget is going to reflect food and financial planning, balancing the needs for our students, our instructional goals, and, and really conclusive of ways to minimize the impact to our taxpayers. So we're very pleased and thankful for the efforts and hard work that Mr. Barnum and several of the administrators are playing and putting into the budget together. And, and I'm pleased to report to the Board of Education and to our community that the budget before you tonight is below the tax cap, has a minimal tax rate increase, um, you know, it's going to continue to maintain an enhanced program. It continues to, um, serve our community through the bus replacement schedule. We still have a priority on school safety and student safety. And we're, we're putting a capital outlay project fund, excuse me, putting capital outlay project fund together for the second year in a row, dedicating those towards the high school library media space. So this spring, the propositions that the community's going to have for them will be to approve the budget, to approve the bus purchase plan, to approve the appropriations for our local libraries, and then to establish a new capital reserve for buses. As you know, this one is exceeded, um, its life, and we're going to continue to move on because we found that the plan we have placed is the way to stretch our taxpayer and community dollars farther while providing our students with very safe, appropriate, and, um, sound travel. So we're really excited to show you that budget to budget, our, our increase is about 3.62%. The actual change in the levy is 2.9%, and the estimated tax rate increase is 2.14%. And you can see under each of those categories, um, the impact as compared to last year's budget. And again, as I talked about this year's process, we started officially back in November, but I think throughout the course of the school year and during the summer months, you'll understand that we have a dedicated focus on financial planning. And then we really start planning for our academic year and our fiscal responsibilities the day after the budget vote. And we're very in tune with what our community's needs are, what our community can support, and also what we think is sustainable. Um, there isn't a thing that we try to implement without sustainability in mind. So the process that you see in front of you on the cycle really reflects a lot of input from all of our administrators, uh, you as the Board of Education, and certainly what we hear out in the community, our priorities for our, our taxpayers and our citizens. So this collaborative process really is, um, fluid. It does really, um, work to identify budget priorities as well as reductions. We know that if we're excessive, that that's something that our community won't support. So we're really trying to stay focused on, you know, a lean budget process, understanding that every year invariably there are going to be certain factors that are going to cause us, um, to go out to the community with a tax rate increase. And we're trying to be mindful of that when we go out to the community. So we do look at revenue sources, we do look at state aid runs, and again, we do look at efficiencies, you know? So every, every year, we ask our administrators to go through a process of process, and we, we start that in the fall, like I mentioned, and we give them scenarios and ask them to come up with creative ways to cut and, and thin out programs that aren't being utilized, and then really think about ways that we might be able to capitalize on extending process. So this year specifically, um, we're about to engage in a construction project. And as you know, we've, we've utilized our capital reserve for that. Um, we've used federal grant monies, and the things that are in front of you on the screen are really dedicated towards, uh, providing our community with safety arc facilities while having zero impact on our, our taxpayer or zero percent increase to our taxpayer, I should say. So the elementary and high school HVAC process is already underway. People that come in for vote might notice the ceiling tiles are missing. Uh, that's not due to neglect, that's due to the ongoing work to make sure that all three of our buildings are eventually climate controlled so that our students don't have to sit there, um, in unbearable conditions. Some of you heard me say that this morning Gary and I were on the maintenance roof, um, inspection. We walked back with Albert Davis to just make sure that the, the work was satisfactory before they issue the warranty to us. I'm pleased to say that I think that that roof came out really, really well, and that for the foreseeable future, I don't anticipate any issues with that. Um, the rest of the stuff on there is part of the 2021 capital outlay project, and I will be reporting to the Board of Education in the near future on what that proposed schedule looks like. We had a kickoff meeting yesterday with our construction team, and I anticipate that you're going to see construction trailers showing up in the near future. And again, that's all part of the 2021 capital improvement project, and that is something where we're utilizing the capital reserve funds, um, and moving forward with trying to upgrade and update our facility and provide our students with the very best. And one of the things that you'll notice, um, really soon, again, is going to be a concession stand with restrooms attached to it outside, something that I think has been long overdue. So that work, I'm really excited to see take place. So the next piece would be, again, trying to keep our community informed about everything that's happening. I know at least once a month for the past several months, you've been hearing us your budget updates. Um, so we're going to get out here, and I'll take our show on the road. Uh, we were out last year, we did a few presentations to the public. We anticipate doing that same thing again. We'll have a meeting set up with our town supervisor just so that we can promote the school budget and what we plan to do with taxpayer funds to the majority of our stakeholders. Um, in addition to that, there is a binder that's located in each of the offices that highlight the budget. So if taxpayers want to come in, take a look at what we've dedicated our funding to, they have the opportunity to do that. Those binders are also located in our public libraries. Um, they're listed here on the website, and then shortly, there will be a community newsletter that goes out just to kind of highlight everything that we've been talking about for the last several weeks. And I know that I'm giving the general overview, and Gary will give some of the specificity. Um, but before I turn it over to him, I would just ask if there are any questions of me or Gary before I can turn it over to him for some of the specifics. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pollan. Okay, so, uh, next slide, please. Okay, so. So, uh, the members here, there are no surprises with this budget. And, um, I just want to say, looking now, since this is a, a budget hearing, that, um, the audience, um, and the board, I think, uh, pretty much everyone here is seeing all these slides. So there, there are no real new slides, the numbers haven't changed. This is the budget. Uh, the appropriations side on the right-hand side, uh, is, is our budget and what the public will vote on, um, on May 16th. So, uh, so this, this is it. Uh, this is the same budget that the board adopted on April 13th. So, uh, this is for the public, basically. And so since, um, the, the board and the members here, the audience, have seen this, I will spend a great deal of time, but if anyone has questions or, or comments, they, you know, we, we can always, uh, inter- inter- communicate those. So, uh, this is the slide we've seen before. We saw it in the first presentation in March and the second, and then the, uh, April presentation. So, uh, what I'd like to point out here is every budget has to be supported entirely by our revenues. They're not, and we try to be conservative both on the appropriation side and on the revenue side. So, uh, we know our, our history on the revenue side, which really dictates the, the, the limit that we can go on our spending, right? It really has to be supported by revenues. And we, we have some mechanisms to, um, shake that balance up a little bit through the use of fund balance and reserves. What we've, uh, obviously was tied up on the revenue, just how those compare from one year to the next. But here we are with a, with a sound, prudent, balanced budget. So here is that revenue budget. Now, start with this first. This is not the budget the voters voted on, but we know that appropriation, their expenditure side of the budget has to be supported by these revenues. So here they are out on the major categories anyhow. And just to point out here, now they, now the numbers have changed from what we've seen before. State aid and property taxes, that's, uh, ninety, ninety percent, uh, over ninety percent of our, our budget right, right there. So, um, state aid is about two-thirds of supporting our budget, and property taxes about a third. And here I'll point out, um, how we reduced our reliance somewhat on our fund balance and reserves from last year. We're down a total of seventy-five thousand. And that's a pretty, pretty good, uh, thing to do. Last year, we had decreased our reliance on reserves to support the, the current 2223 budget. For 2324, that reliance, um, on our reserves and fund balance will go down a little bit. It does, uh, point out that we do utilize our reserves to help balance our budget, and we've looked at some of the detail of those reserves that we are using. Okay, so here is our, uh, 2324 proposed budget, thirty-four million dollars, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand-four-forty-seven. Uh, so that, as Mr. Pollan has pointed out, a 3.62% increase in the budget. Um, and we've talked about the process, I've mentioned it in prior meetings, that, uh, in a year where we saw our total price index and inflation go up around eight percent, we've held this budget down. It was a lot of work. Um, and thankfully, some of those major cost factors were, were, uh, controllable within our budget. So, uh, this budget broke down into these seven categories. And we'll take a, another quick look at each of these categories. So here's just the side-by-side, uh, current year versus next year's proposed budget, and the overall changes. Again, the overall change, 3.6%. And then each of these major functional groups, that's, um, that's how they compare with the prior year. I will say that the largest dollar mark is in the instructional area, as it should be. Okay, a quick look at the first, uh, functional area, general support. And each of these functional, um, areas are broken down, and we have six major categories under the support budget. Essential services is the biggest part, sixty percent of the general support. There are salary, uh, lines, uh, throughout each of these functional areas. There's, there's money, uh, some money in each of these areas for department equipment purchases and supplies and so forth. The instructional budget, uh, we've heard from Mr. Palioviati on some of the highlights of that budget, and the overall changes, adjustments here and there, uh, throughout the instructional budget, uh, but nothing too major there. The transportation budget is going up by two-hundred-seventy-five thousand. That is to accommodate our huge increase that we didn't have in, in the current year budget, mostly for, uh, increased fuel costs. So, and, and all throughout the budget, the, uh, it, it does take into account contractual increases for, for salary costs. So actually, if you just take that, that's roughly three percent, almost equates to the, to the overall increase in our budget. And, um, I'll just point out, if we went back to the overall slide, that, uh, over seventy percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. So we are a people organization, as I usually say. So that's often what drives our budget increases from one year to the next. Again, uh, just some details on the bus purchasing plan. That is proposition number three. We are planning on, um, purchasing five new buses for coming 2324 and retiring six, to reduce our per fleet by, by one vehicle. And we, we know that we currently have in our capacity to do that. We get a, a nice, uh, trade-in value on those buses since we are on a five-year cycle. So it's a, a great, uh, position in addition to the, yeah. Okay, again, uh, the bus purchases will come, uh, out of our bus purchase reserve fund, which, uh, we utilize that every year, and then we, um, do what we can to replenish that reserve. And that's, uh, got a, got a pretty nice, uh, balance, a very now healthy balance that we're exploring. And the community service budget, uh, very small part, but important part of the, the budget. That's mainly for our school safety, security, and some of the community, um, uh, areas such as the pool, golf, fitness center. Okay, so, um, on the benefits, uh, we've talked a lot about this. Some of the benefits and retirement and, and health insurance costs are, uh, normally big cost drivers for any school budget. We're, we're fortunate to have those kind of in check for this year, so, uh, fairly modest increase in overall benefits of four and a half percent. Here's the debt service section of, of the budget. Very little change there. Debt service represents the bond principal and interest payments that we made out of our, that, that we, um, incurred to finance our capital projects. And that, that expense is offset by, um, building aid. And lastly, our other functional group, our infant transfer budget, uh, that contains three line items, uh, transfer for, uh, the school food, food service fund, which we've been doing for years, but, uh, we're not, um, we don't really need to do that for 2324. We've got, um, an actual surplus of fund balance, and so we're, we're able to cut that back, um, for the 2324 to zero. The transfer for special aid fund, that really covers, uh, the local share of our, uh, HEP program over the summer. And then we're, uh, we have two-hundred thousand dollars, uh, budgeted for our capital outlay project. And there's still, uh, legislation, um, pending for, for those outlay projects to go up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, so we're hopeful for that. So into these presentations, we kind of ended with the, um, the budget timeline. We really did start this back in November, as Mr. Pollan stated. We've had a variety of, uh, multiple budget presentations throughout the year. But here we are in the highlighted area. Today's the, the required budget hearing. So, uh, the work taken in comments on the budget, and then the public will, uh, hopefully, a good turnout for, for this, uh, budget and vote on the 16th. Really, that's all I have. I'll take any questions.
And any questions? Thank you, Mr. Pollan, Mr. Barnum, for a great presentation. We appreciate all the work you've done in from you and your administrators in the building now, because I know it's a top-tier project. So, thank you very much. Next, we're going to have the reports and correspondence. It's our leader, Linda from the elementary school. Linda, do you have anything to report for correspondence?
Yes. For the elementary school, I do have something to report. Uh, there's always something interesting and great going on at the elementary school. Uh, they recently had their community fair and literacy night, and over twenty-five people attended that, and they had twenty community partners there as well. The great fellow teams, each made a reference, they donated for families to winter in their night. And then in addition to that, uh, the youth club has sponsored this elastic repair again, and it was the last one that they had. Uh, EIA and math class were completed, but ninety-eight percent of the students taking that to literacy share. And coming up fourth graders for Memorial Day, we put some flags on breaks, affectionately, and some tours throughout the district, as they have been announced. And the Memorial Day parade will be held Friday, Irish Memorial Day, uh, for those town hall, North Row, where they're playing. And, uh, coming up later, uh, in June, there will be the festival of the earth and their spring awards ceremonies. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Linda. Paul, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, a couple of announcements. On the seventeenth of May, we're going to have a concert. And I think it's, it's also, I think, an art show. Is that right? It's called Art and Concert?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, Paul, shortly after that, there's going to be a parent and student night, where the parents and students can go up to middle school and, and, uh, will have, they can ask questions and have a presentation about the classes, which are going to be offered at the middle school next year. Thirdly, the band is going to have a tryout in the school. Once again, parents and students can come to that, and they can get to work with their instruments and see if they're interested in the band and get, uh, have a tryout. Now, the other things would be under due diligence. Any way for that page, Mr. Pollan?
Thank you. Tina, you?
Okay, high school's been busy as usual. National Honor Society hosted their second blood drive, April twenty-sixth, collected thirty-three units, which equates to helping eighty-seven people. Pretty good. Thirteen students competed in the environment, environment, yeah, I said that right, competition, April twenty-seventh, the event sponsored by the Wayne County Soil and Water District. And they're dealing with different environmental conservation, educational kinds of topics, and results are pending. It's a competition, so results are pending. I'm eagerly waiting to see how it goes. On April twentieth, seven students competed in Future Business Leaders of America competition in Rochester that involved drawing presentations and taking exams. A number of our students placed in categories that I've had a visual, uh, that would come up later. I think they went to that themselves. I would, it was still a problem. AP exams are administered this week. They're hopeful with those. Junior ball was April twenty-ninth, senior prom's May sixth. So everything's coming up. On May first, we had decision day, where recognized seniors then have their postgraduate plans are highlighted. Could be college, military, workforce, whatever each of them is doing, and that's always a real plus. And then the last thing, the category is naked, where musical performances. Dr. Mashburn, it's your work. The public, you're busy.
Thank you. Linda, do you have anything for forthcoming?
Yes, I do. I know we go back to the bulletin and notification that forthcoming annual meeting is going to be May twenty-third, October sixth, and, um, Billy Green, Jr., is the New York State Teacher of the Year, and he will be the featured speaker after the dinner and the business meeting. So, uh, the time is right to get the reservations, and it should be a very interesting and thoughtless, um, program. And of course, every year probably that is also, students come and do, uh, musical performance, uh, before dinner time as well. Just a reminder. Oh, and next, next Saturday, we'll just start a community meeting.
Thank you. Simmons, that for the handbook committee, we haven't had a meeting. Autoclean, Ken?
No, we haven't.
Buildings and grounds, Monday, April twenty-sixth. Uh, we discussed, uh, multiple different ways to improve efficiencies, identify, uh, severities, something that needs to be taken care of throughout the district, and, uh, it's not doing efforts just to get everything where it needs to be. Uh, district safety committee also led on April twenty-sixth. I was unable to attend that. I got an overview of, uh, all the buildings and grounds, uh, inside and outside, how progress is being made in regards to, uh, improving the safety for our students and staff. And I had a demonstration on some of the technology that's, uh, out and about for different school districts. Uh, I have nothing on the ALSC and the policy committee, Paul? Surprisingly enough, in this board meeting.
Public access to the board. Tina, do we have anybody that signed up for public access?
No, we do not.
Here we are, the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. John, second. Tina, Paula David. Motion spent. That takes us through page three. Paul's favorite art, great news.
Yeah, I've got quite a bit of good news. Actually, I'm going to continue with middle school good news. Fifty-four percent of the middle schools on the honor roll are higher. I think that's just awesome. Now, but it's also quite consistent, though. I know I've been watching the high school. Generally speaking, fifty percent of our students are on the honor roll. Uh, additionally, well over hundred fifty of students have received cougar off passes. Now, interestingly, we, we don't get those, but the cougar pass has some criteria. One of it is has to be eighty-five, your grades have to be at eighty-five or higher. It also has to have an eighty-five percent attendance. Uh, thirdly, of course, you know, no referrals. Then number four, uh, no orange passes, which means I think that's for the timeout. So, you know, obviously a clean record, and a lot of students are, are getting those. Um, speaking of referrals, um, I know you can, you can look at those in different criteria, but I think statistically significant is the fact that, um, last year at this time, the middle school had one thousand four hundred referrals. This year, they have four hundred fifty. So that's a lo- a drop of almost a thousand. So even if you wiggle the criteria, I think that's pretty dramatic. The only other good news I have is our baseball team's a no. The only other good news I had is our baseball team's taking off.
Sharing other good news, excuse me, uh, new members entered the athletic hall thing. They were reducted, um, I'm not sure what the date is, but it, it was about a week ago. Um, and the new members include Greg Mills, Kathy Hoyt, Patricia Twenty-Five, and Rodney.
I have some as well. Uh, Dylan Sears, um, college student, was elected to the five-day to cap up Honor Society. Uh, we had, uh, a picture in the Lake Shore News of twenty of our high school students at, on, at the Max in Ontario doing a career talk. And, uh, Linda Egger, our Linda Egger, on the board, was elected to the voting board. So congratulations to you for that. And we also, in our consent agenda, and I think you should be appropriately honored as, uh, we have four teachers given tenure, which is always a good thing. And I did, uh, there was a face, and I don't know the details, maybe Mr. Pollan does, but our fourth graders had a competition for voting for a school district, and there were a number of school districts, about like four or five of them, and we came out with the most votes. You don't have to vote, oh, but we won three hundred bags of chips of some type.
Well, I better get a leaf.
Well, I, I asked a certain relative of mine if, what they were going to be used for, and she didn't know, but she, you know, she had two bags a day. So. And the, the one thing in the, the budget I think we should make note of is that with our new process that we've had this, for the second year, we've, the reason for no questions is because we've had questions before, and we've done this for a number of months. And I think we, don't know the budget the same as Gary does and, and Mr. Pollan, but, uh, we've had a good exposure to the budget. So we didn't need to ask a bunch of petty questions. So I, I think we, in the world, it's worthy of, and bathrooms, um, and, uh, the bleachers will be handicapped accessible. Uh, and I think that's a major, major thing, that just that one little thing in that one area, uh, brings us up into modern days, shall we say. So, so thank you for the budget, the work that all of you did, that I, I appreciate it. I know how hard it is. Thank you.
I think one more thing that we would probably like to say is, um, it is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and we really do appreciate all of our teachers. Um, it's one of the hardest professions that you can have, especially in this day and age. Um, and so we really appreciate all of, all of you. So thank you.
I second that. One thing that I did fail to stop at were board member requests, comments, and discussion. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to discuss? I guess it's time for a jury. Motion to adjourn. John, Michelle, Alan Payton? Thank you for coming. Director?